Good evening and welcome to the May 25th, 2022 Board of Supervisors Meeting for Newtown Township. As customary, we invite everyone to observe a moment of silence. And as we do so this evening, I just would mention that since our last meeting, there have been two incidents that I think need our consideration. We'd like to certainly support the families and communities of Buffalo, New York and Ualde, Texas. And it somewhat gives us perspective on where we are and what we're doing this evening. So if you'd join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Lewis, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. No special actions. We'll move right into our first round of public comment. And whoever would like to make a comment on something that's not on the agenda, please feel free, come and state your name and where you're from. And turn the mic on so we can... There you go. Thank you.
All right. Hello, my name's Bradley Cooper, as you guys all know. Resident of Newtown Grant since 1999. And not to kill a dead horse or whatever, but as we know, there's still no Wawa here to make their presentation to you guys. I think that is very disrespectful to you guys. And it is a direct showing on how they care about you guys, your guys' meeting and your guys' time. They were supposed to be here last meeting and for whatever reason, they decided not to show up a few hours beforehand. That's just showing that we don't care about Newtown or the supervisors, who are supposed to be the ones making the final decision on if we come here, don't come here. They're just showing that, oh, we'll come when we feel like it. Or if they tell you that, hey, we'll come next meeting sometime in July, let's say. Who's to say they don't decide two hours, three hours beforehand, oh, we're not going to show up? On top of that, they went to the zoning board hearing and the planning commission hearing and basically told those guys that, oh, for the zoning, in a nutshell, that zoning can't tell us how to run our business, what signs we can, or how the building's supposed to look, or the awning, or how many pumps we have. I just found out before last meeting that there's a possibility that the Wawa is suing the zoning board because they didn't get their exemptions that they wanted to get, that they felt that they're privileged to. Then they went to the planning commission meeting and they got asked a lot of good questions, concerning questions, like someone like me had about them with traffic, with the environment, and a bunch of different things. And when the planning commission was asking them questions, they told them, oh, that these questions aren't really thoroughly getting answered correctly because the data that you're giving us doesn't seem to add up 100%. Some of them had questions, some of them were, you know, asking them, how does this and that match up to the answer that you're giving us? Why are you only giving us three days of traffic study, not five? You know, all these different things. So they made a recommendation at the end of the meeting, as some of you guys know, not to accept Wawa. And they were going to go to the supervisors and say that we don't agree to propose Wawa to you guys or whatever. And then the lady that was one of the representatives started to get, you know, irate that they felt that Wawa is superior, that they can't be told no, that they're above the law, that they're above anything that you guys can say. I feel that because of how they're treating you guys and zoning board and the planning commission, that they should be, have to be here next meeting. You guys should call them up, I'm sure you guys have a way to contact them, and tell them if you're not here the next meeting, that you guys forfeit your application because you guys are, you know, playing games, or you guys are telling us how to run our meeting, or you guys are, you know, doing whatever you're trying to do. Sue us, you know, tell us how to run our township because you guys are ultimately the decision makers. And you guys should be telling them what to do and not to do. It shouldn't be the other way around. And it's really sad that that's how they're treating you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Anyone else for public comment at this time? There will be another round at the end for each topic. We have a motion. Okay. I guess that brings us to reports of boards and committees. No planning commission tonight. I guess they had election last week, so they didn't meet. But, okay, I have one or two things to mention. Let me just find my notes. First is the finance committee met last night. There are two faithful members, which that does not constitute a quorum, but they are still meeting and learning how to... They're both kind of new, so they're learning some of the financial processes of the township. So they... Of course, we talked about how to recruit some new members for the finance committee. We also, they also expressed an interest in having more of a proactive approach to offering input. And I promised, and as I have in the past worked with Mr. Lewis, to help make that assist. So that was the one announcement. My other is Memorial Day is next Monday, and there is a parade in Newtown. Starts at nine o'clock. I don't know if I'm stealing anybody else's thunder, but starts at nine o'clock at the cemetery out by the Business Commons. And winds its way through the borough, ends up at the American Legion in the township. So please come out. That's all I have. Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I only have a short notice about the Economic Development Committee, which met on May 19th. And attending that meeting via Zoom was Jeremy Stoff, the planner at the Bucks County Planning Commission, where he talked about the LI, OLI overlay district and their plans. And the members of the Economic Development Committee had an opportunity to more or less explain to them what their thoughts were on the types of activities or businesses and ancillary things that should be allowed in that district. This refers to the Business Commons area. So I think it was a productive discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder.
I don't have anything to report as far as committees that I've attended meetings for. I did, however, attend the Newtown Fire Association Monthly Meeting on Monday, which I always try to do because I find that very enlightening. Also, I have some announcement from Parks and Rec. So register today for the following upcoming programs. Super Soccer Stars Memorial Day Camp, Learn to Draw, Pokemon Card Class, Namaste Goat Yoga, that's a favorite. Summer is just around the corner. We have weekly summer camps for every interest, including sports, art, cooking, and STEM. Pavilion rental dates are filling up fast. Please visit our website for facts and calendar. Discount movie tickets are available to purchase at the Parks and Rec office. Sesame Place tickets are available for pre-order at a discounted price of $17. And that is all for me today.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Snyder. Mr. Clabro?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clabro. Mr... Mr. Kyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, in addition, I can add to the parade on Monday.
Yes.
They do stop at the cemetery Newtown, the library. There's a memorial at the old library and the Borough Hall, and then the Legion Hall. So there's a couple of places you can catch the parade going by. After the parade, there is an old-time baseball game at Pickering Field, which is a pretty good time. The rules are different, the balls are different, the bats are different. It's a little more exciting game than, you know, maybe MLB baseball. But they don't have gloves, the ball bounces and all kinds of weird stuff. But so that's a good time. Bring a chair and hang out with the family. I used to do that all the time when the kids were little, but I still go, even though my kids are gone. On the community outreach side of it, Pickering Manor is, I think everyone knows is a local nonprofit. I don't want to lump it into a category, but retirement or, you know, home. They, the Newtown Rotary does an annual fundraiser to raise funds for them every year. And they will be having golf outing for funds for Pickering Manor on June 16th. So if you're looking for a way to make a donation to Pickering Manor, you can check out newtown-rotary.org and look about helping out that way. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Right, that brings us... No public hearings, no land development. Under Reports of Officials, we have the engineer first.
Thank you. First item we have tonight is the Mayfield Development, the Arcadia Project Financial Security Release Number Two. Based on our inspection of the work completed, we recommend that the township release the amount of $418,926 to the developer from the financial security that's held for the improvement. So after this release, there is remaining financial security in the amount of $2,318,961.95.
Would someone like to make that motion? For the financial security release?
Well, I could make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr.... I have trouble with names, mate. Thank you, Mr. Mack. And do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from the board?
Well, if I may, I was just curious about the work that has been completed, which you mentioned. Can you give us a little bit of idea what exactly is completed?
Yep, they've completed a lot of the storm water work. So they did some basins and installed some piping. They also did a lot of the curbing work to set up for the roadways. So that's just sort of where they're at now. And obviously, a lot of the earth moving ahead of those things.
Right.
But that's where they're at. Yep.
Anyone else? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion from the public? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Those in favor of accepting the... Sending the Financial Security Release Number Two for Mayfield Holdings, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. For one.
All right, the next item we have tonight is the Lower Doolington Road Multi-Use Trail, Change Order Number Two. As the board and the township is aware, during construction, we have run into some unforeseen utility conflicts. There's also been delays from a certain fiber optic company in regards to relocation of their facilities. So unfortunately, that has caused a delay in the construction of the trail and the stormwater improvements associated with that. Based on these unforeseen conflicts, we've had to do a little bit of redesign with the underground infiltration trenches. So that's what's causing this delay. So this change order number two is strictly a 60-day calendar extension of the contract time due to these utility conflicts. So we would recommend approval of this change order. I'm happy to answer questions.
So let's get a motion on the floor first, and we can... So, okay, thank you, Mr. Davis. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. We have a motion and a second. Ask away.
Oh, thank you. As you know, I have a lot of questions about this because a resident adjacent to the trail on Stanford Drive was very concerned about the delay. And not only that, I think the utility crisis or whatever conflict you said. There was a cable sticking up right out of the ground there. And when that happened, the workers went over to him and said, you still got all your power? So obviously, they didn't know what the heck was going on. And they cut this cable, basically. Now, I'm assuming that's what you're referring to when you say a utility... What did you call it? A conflict?
A conflict. So that utility, my understanding from the contractor, that the one that was cut was in fact an abandoned old utility. So that's why there wasn't any disruption to the residents. They did check with them. The conflicts that we're seeing now are Lumens Fiber Optic. They have a fiber optic line that runs up that side of the trail. We've coordinated with them for a year and a half, two years on the relocation, and their schedule has just been pushed, unfortunately. So that, in addition to some other water mains in the area, are causing the conflicts, so.
Okay, in my discussions... I guess that'll work. In my discussions, also, we talked about change, changes that have been made in the original design because this resident also had concerns about a bench being adjacent to his property where he doesn't have any privacy shield set up. And I was notified that this bench was taken out of the plan, but nevertheless, it was in the latest plans that I received. So I'm just curious, what other things were removed from the original plan aside from that one particular bench?
The only other item that's different on the plans was the removal of fencing at the request of the Woods of Saxony HOA. The fencing would have been directly behind their HOA, and they had concerns regarding lawn maintenance. So we are working with the contractor to find other places within the township to install this fence because unfortunately, the material was already purchased by the contractor. So in an effort to try to make that work, you know, they're willing to install it in other locations in the township.
Okay, thank you very much.
Instead of installing it, could we possibly just keep that money instead?
You could, that is an option. Yep, the township could take the ownership of the fence material that's been purchased and then negotiate a credit from the contractor for their labor for that. So if the township's inclined to do that, we could go that route as well.
It sounds like a better option than just putting it in another indiscriminate place. That's just my opinion. Do we have any updated timeline at all as to completion of this?
So this contract, this extends them until July 19th. So that's sort of the goal that we're shooting for right now. I'll keep everyone posted, obviously, if we think that it's going to go beyond that. But that's what this change order is for now, that time extension for their lost time.
I had a question that springboards off of Ms. Snyder's question. And that is, do we need any action for us to move that or to give the fence to the township? Or would we just make that arrangement administratively?
No, I think if it's the board's consensus, we can just let the contractor know.
Micah, do you have a spot where it would be useful already and that's why we would have it installed?
Yes, it would be replacing the fence over at Helen Randall and over at Veterans Park that's sort of falling down, so.
Was that any of those fences already in our budget?
No.
Okay.
Not this year.
I'm all right with fixing if anything needs to be fixed. But I was with you, Alan, not sure where it was going to go, but it sounds good to me.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, too.
All right, we'll keep the plan as is then.
We do have a motion and a second. Everybody done with our questions here? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of approving Change Order Number Two for the Lower Doolington Road Multi-Use Trail, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. I thought a question occurred to me about the... Getting an update on the DVRPC Regional Streetlight Procurement Program. Could you... I had a note here from your engineering report that it was discussed with DVRP on May 4th. So I wonder what the outcome was of that and what the process is going forward.
Right, so we discussed with the DVRPC rep just their schedule moving forward for the next phase. They anticipate starting another kickoff round with the township in the summer. They gave that general timeline. So I'm anticipating, I'm going to reach out to them at the beginning of next month to make sure that we're still on that schedule. And that was one thing that we did talk with DVRPC about, was starting the process a little bit earlier to give municipalities, you know, the ability to be able to budget for some things once that budget cycle starts. So that was some of the feedback that we discussed with them at that call. So next month, I'll reach out to them if they haven't already reached out to the township. But I'll keep everyone updated on that.
And they'll be, at that point, they'll hopefully be able to give us some kind of ballpark idea of the cost.
They will, yep. We'll give them any more information that they need. We've already given them, you know, utility bills and things that they requested. But if they need anything else, they'll take it. But they'll be able to give us some budgetary information.
And just so it's clear, there will be a cost for the township.
The initial, they will do the initial preliminary budgetary analysis at no cost to the township. But once, that gives the township the idea of what to budget for moving forward.
Okay, we'll be looking for that. Thank you. Anybody else? Questions for the engineer? We'll move right along to our solicitor, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number of items this evening, first one of which is the board's consideration of Resolution Number 2022-R-11, accepting dedication of the right-of-way of Newtown Yardley Road as it is associated with the Three Penns Trail development. I believe the development is complete and it's appropriate for the developer, as required by the plan, to dedicate the right-of-way of Newtown Yardley Road to the township. We've received a signed and notarized deed of dedication. And the board is required by resolution to accept dedication of that road so that the right-of-way can then be sent to PennDOT to include on the township's liquid fuels roll. So if the board's of a mind, it would be a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2022-R-11, accepting the dedication of the right-of-way of Newtown Yardley Road out as it's associated with Three Penns Trail.
Would we have such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder.
I'll second.
Second, thank you, Mr. Davis. Do we have any further discussion, questions for the solicitor? From here, how about from the public? Seeing none, call the question. Those in favor of the motion to receive the dedication of the right-of-way of Newtown Yardley Road from Three Penns Trail, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Next item is the consideration by the board of a settlement agreement and stipulation with the owner of the Newtown Shopping Center, known as Newtown/Bucks Associates LP, and also our own zoning hearing board. This arises from an appeal that the developer of the shopping center took from the zoning hearing board's denial of its request for a variance for impervious coverage to allow the improvement of the Chick-fil-A, as well as the development of a separate pad site with a retail, a new retail building. As part of the settlement, the township and the zoning hearing board would agree to grant the developer the impervious coverage that it needs to perform the Chick-fil-A improvements, but not the pad site improvements. And as a condition to that agreement, we would be adding a provision that requires the developer to not develop the pad site unless and until it acquires specific relief for the impervious coverage from the zoning hearing board and obtains final and unappealable land development approval. So if the board is of a mind, it would be a motion to approve the settlement agreement and stipulation for the Newtown Shopping Center between Newtown Township, the Newtown Township Zoning Hearing Board, and the Newtown Bucks Associates LP.
Do we have such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion about this? Seeing none, okay. Any from the public? All right. Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of accepting a settlement agreement, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Next item in our report is consideration of a resolution approving an intermunicipal agreement with Newtown Borough. This involves the township's road program, as there was last year with Sterling Street. This year, North Congress Street is being worked on and improved. And that happens to run both in the township and the borough. So we are proposing that the board approve entering into an intermunicipal agreement with Newtown Borough, whereby the township would perform the work, bid the work, and have it performed on the borough portion of North Congress Street. And the borough would pay the township for all work associated with that, including professional fees. pay the township for all work associated with that, including professional fees incurred for that work. So, again, if the board's of a mind, it would be an, a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2000, 2022-R-12, approving an intermunicipal agreement with Newtown Borough for the road program to include North Congress Street.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Do we have a second? I'll second it. I'll second it. So, a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion from the board? I actually had one real quick question. I think, Mr. Lewis, I didn't let you know I was going to ask this, but that, that is the street with all the trees that we had trouble with earlier in the year.
I don't believe so. I know we've gotten complaints about potholes specifically on that road.
Okay.
Maybe I'm just not recalling the complaints about trees.
I should have given you a chance to look it up before. I'm sorry. That thought just occurred to me. I guess I should manage my thoughts. Any, any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the intermunicipal agreement with Newtown Borough for North Congress Street paving, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing.
Thank you. The next item is consideration to send the proposed wireless amendment of the joint municipal zoning ordinance back to the jointure with the township's recommendations. The ordinance was prepared in response to Act 50 of 2021, going into effect last October. It requires that municipalities provide for the placement of small wireless telecom facilities within the public right-of-way. It provides time limitations on the township having to act on applications for that, and it also limits the amount of fees that the township can charge for a, a company wishing to locate facilities within the right-of-way. The ordinance was prepared, I believe, late last year. It has been circulated. The jointure municipalities have sent it out for planning commission review. The Newtown Township Planning Commission has reviewed that ordinance and submitted recommendations to the board, and it is now before the board to determine whether it wishes to send the ordinance back to the jointure municipalities with the planning commission comments slash recommendations and/or recommendations of its own.
Do we have someone who would like to make that motion?
I'll make it.
Do we, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have any discussion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, yes, you may. I'll follow you up.
When you're saying recommendations from the township, you're specifically referring to CKS document that had several sort of minor changes to the wording, heights of fences, and stuff like that.
That is correct.
Now, if we send it back, I mean, I think they should consider those changes, but there might be some other changes down the road that we could still request.
Absolutely correct. This is an intermediate step for this ordinance. It is not, the board is not enacting this ordinance. It would require all three municipalities to actually enact the ordinance at public hearings before it becomes law. This is in the, this is part of the review process where the ordinance is sent to the individual townships. Upper Magfield, Wrightstown, and Newtown reviewed and then ultimately sent back with comments. So, that's where we are.
What I'm saying is, we're not giving the impression to the jointure that if they make the changes that CKS recommends, we would approve the ordinance, correct?
Well, that's up to the board. If the board wants to see additional changes made to the ordinance, now is the time to formulate those and submit those comments to the jointure municipalities.
Well, then I make a, a motion to amend your motion to include some language in there, the relating to future changes that we might request must also be considered. Something like that, is that what you're saying?
No. I think now, tonight, is the time to come up with...
Well, you know, I've been studying this for quite a while, and I don't have all my ducks in a row with regard to some other issues that were brought up by a lawyer, Mr. Campanelli, who just participated in a Zoom meeting and informed us that the way this ordinance is currently written, there's a fatal gap in the ordinance. Now, I don't, not a lawyer, but he said, because of this gap, we cannot, the ordinance cannot protect the township if, if we wanted to, say, deny a tower to go up, I don't know, in the biggest and the best development here, we need to have a specific reasons, and we need to make sure that the zoning hearing board knows what those are, and those were not elucidated in the current ordinance, according to this attorney. So, those are, that's just one of the issues, and, you know, so I feel that according to this attorney, who's an expert, he's advised many townships on this particular type of ordinance, that this ordinance would not protect us in, in that kind of a case. So, we might be spending a lot of money and not getting what we really need to have. Now, I'm just saying, I thought if we were to okay what the motion you, we just made, that it would go back to the zoning, Joint Zoning Council, where we can bring up all these other issues with the current ordinance. Since they're going to make changes anyway, some of the changes of CKS and maybe some other changes, it has to come back to us for approval, right?
Of course.
So, we don't have to specify tonight exactly what other changes we might need.
But, but, and, and you don't have to, but it's just going to prolong the, the process because the ordinance has already been to the jointure municipalities. Let me finish, John, please. Please let me finish. They sent it to the townships for comments. I, I don't think it's appropriate to comment that we might have future comments. The time is now to formulate all of your comments and submit them together, both the planning commission comments, the CKS letter comments, and this board's separate comments to the jointure municipalities at this time, because then it's going to be sent back to the townships again, and is that when you're going to make or recommend your changes? You're, you're making the, the process on ending. This is the time to submit your comments. If you're not ready to make the comments, then perhaps the ordinance isn't ready to be sent back to the jointure. That's an option, but if you are ready and you do have concerns about it, then those comments should be formulated and submitted back to the jointure. You did.
Then I withdraw my second.
May I say something in regards to the process of how this goes through the jointure?
Sure, Mr. Kellerman.
If, if we send this to the jointure in regards to whatever CKS has made recommendations for, it has to go through the jointure, they have to review it, and they have to see if they either agree or want to make other amendments. Then it comes back to us, and we can change it again. Now, I understand you're saying it prolongs the process, but it's our decision if we want to make any adjustments and continue to prolong the process. We don't have to, we don't have to agree with what they're going to send back to us unless they send back to us what we are suggesting they should agree to. So, although I, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Solicitor, and I agree with it, but we also have the power and the ability to make any adjustments once it comes back to our tables again.
Absolutely correct.
So, what we're sending tonight isn't really written in stone, because it can come back to us and we can make adjustments to it a second time.
No, Mr. Mack is withdrawing his second. I'm not sure what...
No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying anything about his motion. I'm just saying, we can make an adjustment when it comes back to us if they're not agreeable to what we want.
Yes, then, then the ordinance has to go back to the jointure municipalities again for them to discuss it at one of their monthly meetings and talk about whether they want to agree with the change, the additional comments and changes that the board is recommending. We're trying to streamline the process a little bit.
It's been done many a time. I think the last time was when we were talking about the definition of a fact.
I hear you loud and clear on that.
So, I mean, it's, it's, it can be done multiple times. I know it's a, it's a monthly, maybe a three-month process, but
Right.
we have every right to have in that, in there what we want.
Absolutely. Yeah, now we have a motion without a second.
Yeah. I was going to maybe suggest we could even table the, the whole thing.
I'm going to, I'm going to make a suggestion. I mean, if we...
Because I don't think we're ready, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I jumped in. We have no protection right now at all from any control that we have whatsoever. I think we could, and correct me if I'm wrong also, we could approve what comes back to us, and then later, at a later date, try to amend it again with, we actually have items that we wanted on there too. I'm saying it's an option. I'm not saying it's the best option. I don't think, this is not going to be in stone, right?
I don't know what you're saying, but what I've said about the expert, he said, we have no protection in any case with the current version of the ordinance. We have no protection, he said. So, I, I don't...
Respectfully, I think the council...
I mean, there's a difference of opinion.
Council to the jointure municipalities disagree with that legal assessment.
So, where are we? We have a, we have a motion with no second. Motion with no second.
So, what would happen if we tabled it?
It would have to, we'd have to discuss next week.
Right, it would be, it would be put off to the next meeting. It would be on the agenda of the next meeting to take it off the table and reconsider it. And if that's what happens, I would think that at that time, we would have all comments and suggestions with regard to this ordinance formulated, pre-reviewed, and ready to go at that point. So, we're not, so again, we're keeping the wheels moving forward here.
So, that sounds good to me, that we could have just two weeks to come up with some additional changes we like to make, not just the changes which are mostly cosmetic that CKS recommended. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I think...
When's the next jointure meeting?
June 2nd.
Right, so it's a week, not two weeks. Are we going to be ready in a week?
That's, that's a week. Our next meeting is two weeks, so go back to the jointure at their, at their...
Are we going to be ready to have a discussion with the jointure next week, is my point?
Well, there's nothing to determine.
Well, we have nothing to send them at this point.
Right.
So, nothing's going to happen next week for it either.
All right. Wait, we could, we could... I'm sorry.
Jerry.
Do you want to address it? Do you want to, I mean, Mr. Shankman is the solicitor to, serves as solicitor to the jointure at this time. I don't know if you want to address this, Jerry. Yeah, why, here, you can just come and use my mic here.
I believe that's in order.
Good evening, everyone. The matter stands at this point that only, only Wrightstown supervisors have approved the ordinance as it is without any changes. It has not gone to the supervisors in Upper Magfield yet, and they have not voted to approve or disapprove the ordinance. I don't know when they meet, but they have the same pressures we have. I think what was really necessary, I, I attended that Zoom conference with the FCC expert, just happens to be in New York. There are some limitations to what he said, but he made some very, very good points, and I think it's incumbent upon the supervisors here to really listen to what he had to say, make sure you understand it, and then we can have conversations among ourselves, those who don't violate the Sunshine Act, about what, what is imperative and what is not imperative. I'd be happy to participate in that to the best I can. I've been, unfortunately, deep in this thing for the past month or so, and I think I can be helpful. We can also attempt with your, with your permission to make amendments to the ordinance with any changes you want to make, but we just can't do that on our own. You have to give us direction to do that, and we could attempt to make it, improve it with what content you, you would like to have included. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them, but that's sort of where it stands.
How would, how would you put those comments together? By getting together with, with a couple, I guess, some of us individually?
We would have to talk individually or...
The other solicitors?
Yeah, I would, I would consult with Dave, of course, and I would speak with, I would speak with the person who actually drafted this ordinance.
Yes.
And plus, the, the person behind it, who's in, actually, an attorney in Pittsburgh.
Yes.
I could speak with them. I could speak with Mr. Campanelli again, if he's, if he's so inclined to see what we need and what we don't really need. And also, you should remember that there's not just an ordinance involved here, there's a design guide that accompanies the ordinance. You have to be sure you read them both together, because the design guide, it gives you awful, a lot more detail than the ordinance itself does. Read them together, and then you can see what's missing and what's present. And there are things missing. There are clearly things missing, but perhaps not quite as much as it seemed when we were discussing it last time.
I did hear Mr. Davis bring up the point that we are regulation-less, and without those regulations, we...
Well, every municipality in, in a Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has to pass some kind of ordinance, so 2,800 municipalities. At this point, a lot of them haven't done it. There have been no applications filed to do any of these facilities yet, not in Newtown, not anywhere in the jointure, and I don't anticipate any very soon. So, it's not as if we're without any protection. The Telecommunications Act of 1996, which is federal legislation, offers some protections, and that carries forward, and if, if those protections exist right now, the, the Act 50 that was passed last fall, was implemented last fall, has some protections, we, without the ordinances, that are amenable to us as well. Just that the ordinance, if we fine-tune it right, gives, gives you another layer of protection. And that, and it, because we know our communities best, we can, we sort of have an idea of what we want and what we don't want. That's, and at this point, that's all I can tell you, just could, you have to read all that stuff and then ask questions and get really focused in on what's important to you.
I, I know I've been reading stuff and a lot of information.
Yeah, it's a very technical field.
In order to make sense out of it.
Yeah.
I, I really do feel like I need a little bit more time.
Okay.
Without dragging it out too far.
Is this the solicitor's that we're getting with here?
Yeah, I think that's fine. We do have a motion without a, without a second. I, I would ask whether, the, the motion is to send the ordinance in, in its current form back to the jointure with CKS's comments to it. That motion was made and seconded, but it was, the second was withdrawn. I would ask if, Mr. Chairman, if you would ask whether there is a second to that motion, and if not, it will die for a lack of a second.
Is there another second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. So, I'm wondering where we are now.
Well, we have a motion with a second. We have obviously had discussion on this. It would be appropriate for additional board comment and discussion, and then public comment.
My whole thought is, it's better to have something at this point than nothing. I don't disagree with your arguments that there could be additional stuff, but added to it, but that's where, that's where I was.
Again, we will still have, I'm sorry. We will still have two weeks to review till the next, to our next meeting. We can make it, we, in, in the future, we still can make adjustments. But I, I think, as Kyle said, I think the intention is, let's send something, it's better than sending nothing, and then we can make the adjustments as it comes back to us.
Perhaps.
Because, because we are the originating township of this ordinance, so it has to come back to us.
Well, I, I, is that true?
Is it true?
I, I, I came from Upper Magfield, actually.
And Upper Mag... That's the case, Upper Magfield hasn't even looked at it yet.
They haven't voted on it yet. The planning...
They haven't voted on it yet. The Atlantic Commission has made a recommendation, but the supervisors have not reviewed their recommendation or voted on the recommendation.
Even so, we still have a say. It has to, we still have a say in it when it comes back.
Yeah, I, I agree.
My concern is it might be more confusing to come back and, you know, to, to send them something and then come back and amend that the next, you know, in the second or third go around. I would rather, I personally would rather table it, come back in two weeks and have, have, have our, have our comments in place.
Mr. Chair, point of order. You, you can make a motion to table. A table overrules the motion.
So, I would make that motion.
I would second that motion.
Okay, so now we have a motion to table and a second.
That sounds like a good idea to me. It's a compromise, giving us an extra two weeks. It's not extraordinary delay, and we can get our ducks in order.
And we will work to get them in order. So, let me ask if there are any other comments from the board? How about from the public? Who's on the motion, who's on the motion to table?
One motion, motion to table is considered at this point.
If you do, please come forward and state your name and where you're from.
The mic.
And the mic.
Push the button.
Push the button, you got it.
Joanne Malinowski. I am a resident of Upper Mayfield, but I understand this is a joint sure issue, and that's why I'm here. I, I thank you for not approving it as it stands. The gentleman that you're referring to, Mr. Campanelli, was researched thoroughly and vetted and has done thousands of these particular issues. So, I urge you to look at him as a professional who's knowledgeable in his area, someone who knows what he's talking about, not just, he specializes, that's all he does. So, to take his research and glean from it, in his professional opinion, things where we're totally vulnerable and weak, I believe, and I believe he was very specific. It didn't seem like it was huge changes, but they absolutely have to be looked at. Another thing that I was concerned about, I do have a little bit of a background, but I know a lot of law documentation is boilerplate. This is something that has been prepared on a state level, so I'm sure a lot of the townships are getting the same documentation. And a lot of them unfortunately are approving it out of ignorance. They're not realizing that they're walking into a Pandora's box. He was very clear as to these townships walking into Pandora's box. He found some issues. He did get a copy of our ordinance from Newtown. He was able to review it. He was very specific about some critical issues that we were overlooking. And it was something that was looked at completely. One of the things that he said is that he certainly could take each area and review it, but in his professional opinion, it was more a matter of taking the township's historical situation. We're going to get it. We know we're going to get it anyway, but to position ourselves in the best possible way. So, I encourage you not to look at this lightly on behalf of the owners. I think, I want to say thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Please turn on the microphone and state your name for us.
Ann Longen, 407, Sawyers. I, I agree with the people, with the idea that it should be tabled, because it needs more time in order to look at what needs to be improved and to make the changes so that the township is in the best position going forward with the whole concept of 5G. And the, it affects the township, it affects the people, it affects the entire community. So, tabling it, I think, is the best thing to do, the wisest thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion to table, say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. Motion is tabled. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item on our report is authorization from the board to draft a resolution for the Audubon Mid-Atlantis Birdtown PA program. The township is a bird town. It is a, it has been recognized by Birdtown PA as a participating municipality. However, as I understand it, the governing body of the Birdtown and Birdtown, Pennsylvania programs has changed. It is no longer one Audubon society. It's now another Audubon, I believe it's Pennsylvania Audubon Council, which now is operating that. And they have requested that all Birdtowns adopt a resolution recognizing that the Pennsylvania Audubon Council is now the administrator of the program and reinforce the township's participation in that program, designating a member or of staff or an elected official to serve as the township's agent in that process. So, if the board is of a mind, it would be a motion to authorize our office to draft the appropriate resolution for Birdtown, Pennsylvania.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Solicitor. Do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Do we have a second? I'll second it. So, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seems pretty clear to me that we're just making some changes to what we already.
It seems administrative in nature, yes.
Any comments from the public? I know we have one person, a happy person in the back. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last item is two zoning hearing board applications that will be heard by the zoning hearing board on June 2nd. They are both residential. The first involves 16 Sparrow Walk and the construction of a sunroom addition. The other involves 13 Columbine Circle, the construction of a two-story addition and patio. Does the board wish to take any position on those or allow the zoning hearing board to decide them without the board's input?
They can decide it on.
I'm, I'm hearing crickets, as I like to say. So, we will not take any position on those. And that concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you. Other lengthy ones, thank you. Okay, we move to the township manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance as of this evening is $6,192,681. Plan expiration before the board with no action required. We have Chief Forsyth for the monthly emergency services report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? I'd like to report for the month of April. The emergency services and the fire, the Fire Association responded to 20, 96 calls for service. We completed 75 annual fire safety inspections in the township and 18 annual fire safety inspections in the borough. We responded to six calls in Newtown Borough. Emergency services responded to four, and the NFA responded to two of those calls. Total calls for service between Newtown Borough and Newtown Township were 78. Out of the 96 calls, we responded to four building fires, 23 fire alarm systems, five fumes calls, nine dwelling fires, 42 EMS calls, seven calls to assist the squad, two traffic accidents, two auto extracations, one wires call, and one chimney. And that is the report for emergency services.
That's all in one month?
That's in one month.
Wow. Sounds busy.
Yep. I would like to announce that September 17th is the Annual Beer Fest. That's the Fire Association's largest fundraiser. It'll be held at the Stocking Works again this year, and we have begun our annual recruitment drive. So, hopefully, we can encourage some young people or older people to join the Fire Association, become part of our team. We are very busy looking for volunteers. So, if you know anyone that would like to join and be part of our team, they can stop by the firehouse any Monday or Wednesday evening, or stop by Station 55 at the township complex, Monday through Friday, from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. We'd be more than happy to talk to them.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. As you may know, every year, I donate $100 so that I can get my name on the back of that T-shirt. But I would like to say, there's one name I would not like to see on the back of that T-shirt as a sponsor. And it's an opioid producer in this township, so I just wanted to make that known. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Glenn, when is the fest?
The beer fest?
Yeah.
September 17th.
Thank you.
It's usually a Saturday, right?
That's a Saturday, yes. It's rain or shine, so we can use all the help we can.
Yes. Any other questions for the chief? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Chief.
Next item under my report, Mr. Chairman, is the authorization to purchase three police vehicles utilizing American Rescue Plan funding. As you heard last meeting, the chief, Chief Hearn had indicated that there are, that we have several issues with the existing police fleet, including three cars with blown engines. The appropriate motion would be authorization to approve the resolution to purchase three police vehicles utilizing American Rescue Plan funds.
So, move. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? I would just say that.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. I would just say that I think we've all, we've all seen the memos that, without giving, without giving too much away, let me get a drink of water. We have, I think, well over 10 vehicles with 100, nearly 100,000 miles or more. So, I, I think it's imperative that, that we backfill those cars. Several cars are in the shop at any given time. And when I look at service, I mean, I don't want to be the one, and I don't want anyone to be the one that has difficulty because of, of slow response time or a car breaking down on the way to a response. It's, I think it's just imperative that we, that we do this. And financially, this is, this is not coming out of the general fund. It's coming out of the ARP funds. There's still some ARP funds left, many of them left. And two weeks, two weeks ago, we authorized three cars out of this year's budget. They were budgeted, they were planned for. These three are from ARP money, again, no, no impact on the budget itself. And it, it may, I don't know, give us some time to look for some grants for next year. Looking ahead, there'll be probably police cars in the budget for next year. But maybe this gives us a chance to look for some grants. We've been successful in getting grants from our legislators in the past. In the last four years, I think, we've gotten two grants, one from Perry Warren and one from Steve Sanicero. So, I mean, that's, that's why I support this, and I think there's a need and a way to do it. So, Mr. Clabert?
Yeah. I, I'd like to say a few things in regards to, we've always said in this township that we're safety first. And in light of what happened in the last few weeks, shooting in Buffalo, and yesterday, the unfortunate shootings of little children, I, I would hate to think, and hopefully, and God forbid it would ever happen in this township, but it's happened in better places, upscale places, that if something were to happen, that we would have out-of-date police cars trying to, trying to respond to these situations. And I hate to be a member of the board that kind of didn't approve new cars that may have put people's lives in danger. I, I hate to go down as a board that, what do they use that word? And I hate that word, is that we would have been defunding the police at the safety of residents. And I think as far as how the money is going to be spent coming out of the ARPA funds, it's an opportune time for us to do this. Like Mr. Fisher said, we're spending, we're not spending our money, but we're spending money that has been given to us for, to do things like this. So, I would support purchasing these vehicles.
Anyone else? Yes, I, I would just note that the chief recommended that we purchase four vehicles every year. We've already purchased three this year. So, I was thinking that maybe we could purchase one from ARP right now, this year, and four next year, when the budget, the last budget we had only had three. So, eventually, he would get up to every year, four cars per year. And I would note that the ARP funds are not really unlimited. There's a wish list that we have, which, which covers a lot of other things that we want to do with the ARP funds. And at the moment, if all those items were included, we would need an extra $275,000, according to my estimates, to get all those items on the wish list. But I do see the, the need for more police cars. I think the chief mentioned there were seven that really needed to be replaced immediately. We already got three. So, we could still spend ARP money in 2023 for additional cars, once we get a, a new handle on what all that money is going to be spent on, aside from the police department. That's just my opinion.
May I just add to that? Not to argue with you, John, I understand. But I've just found from past experience, once you cut down on the purchasing of police vehicles, it's very, very difficult to catch up. You may say next year, we want to do four, but we have the capability of doing four or five now. We don't know what's going to happen next year. I mean, prices of gasoline are going up, prices of groceries are going up, prices that are going to be to us in regards to how we operate this township are going to go up. So, next year may never come in regards to recouping. And I've learned from being on this board for a long time, that when some boards have cut back on the police vehicles, it was very difficult to catch up. And that, that's the, it, it sounds, sounds logical, but when it comes to that time, it, it gets difficult. And I think that now we have the money, let, let's, let's do it.
Well, I, I see what you're saying, and I'm not in any way saying to cut back. I'd never made that suggestion. I just made a suggestion that we cut back for now, instead of three, maybe do one. But, you know, I see, that's just my opinion, because I know the chief said he wanted four every year. And I would be amenable to that, and we could still do that next year. I know we gotta do something, no matter what the price is. So, I'm just gonna let it stand at that, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Mack. Any other comments? If not, any comments from the, from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of purchasing the three police vehicles with. with ARPA money, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to clarify that this, this order of these vehicles is for the 2023 model year. The 2022 model year is closed. What they do now is they're opening an ordering period for vehicles that could expire within two weeks or four hours. So on behalf of the police department, I appreciate the board moving forward with, with this request.
I think I did see that in one of the handouts, but I was confused about what it meant.
Yes, that's correct. So it's another salesman game. But anyway, the next item under my report is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a six-wheel dump truck using additional ARPA, American Rescue Plan funding. This truck, that was included in the packet, was a memorandum from the Public Works Director. This truck will be replacing a 2001 International Six-Wheel Dump Truck that has seen, certainly seen better days. So with that, the appropriate motion would be authorization to approve the resolution to purchase a six-wheel dump truck utilizing ARPA funds in the amount of $188,524.
Do we have such a motion for the dump truck?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Seven.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis and Mr. Clabro. Have a motion and a second. We have a motion on the floor. Any, any discussion? I was just going to point out, you said 2001. So the dump truck that this will be replacing has been around for 21 years.
Yes, it's a classic.
Antique, maybe. Yes. Mr. Chairman, yes. It's $188,000. That's more than the three police vehicles. I noted that there was some other, maybe another dump truck that, maybe another truck that we're paying off as a loan. I guess we couldn't do that in this case, instead of paying upfront, $188,000?
You would.
Get some financing for this?
You could finance it if, if that was the direction the board would want to go. I would caution the board that the interest rates have crept up over the past couple of weeks. This would be a one-time, a one-time payment out of the, out of the American Rescue Plan funds for the truck.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of using ARP funds for the International Six-Wheel Dump Truck, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
That's all I have under my report, Mr. Chairman, although I will mention briefly that the board met an executive discussion to discuss matters of pending litigation related to Chick-fil-A.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Ms. Snyder, do you have the minutes, bills, and reports for us this evening?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of May 11th, 2022.
So there's a motion. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of accepting the minutes as described, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
We had a work session on May 16th. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of that work session.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of approving the minutes of the work session on May 16th, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Bills list.
I'd like to make a motion to pay our bills in the amount of $383,951.72.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Those are the right numbers. I just checked them again.
Oh, I checked.
To be sure.
Not going to catch me again.
All right. Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor, say, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Clabro.
Finally, I would like to make a motion to approve the total of inter-fund transfers in the amount of $241,300.01.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? From the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of paying, of paying our fund transfers as found in the May 25 bills list, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Okay, brings us to our second round of public comment. Any one from the public? Please don't forget to give your name.
Good evening. Johnny April, Newtown Grant, biggest and the best. First public comment, my esteemed neighbor and friend over here, Bradley Cooper, not the movie star. Talked about Wawa, like many people come up in the past talking about Wawa and everything on a bypass, and shouldn't be going to bypass. But where were they when you had the Arcadia thing? You know, they were shot down three times. One of our paid professionals makes a big, big mistake, and we get stuck with it. It's going to hurt all of Newtown. Of course, the professionals, they weren't, they weren't fired, they weren't changed or anything. It probably has to do with, you know, they're a longtime Democrat, so maybe nothing happened. Remember, so many years back, when one of the supervisors had a little indiscretion where no one got hurt, and two of the supervisors were calling for his head. They wanted him removed and all that stuff, and many people come up to the podium and said he should get out and all that stuff. He did, and he went on to big and better things. But I remember all these people complaining, but here it happens, he hurts all of Newtown, you know, with his mistake, and turning dirt to building now and everything. And I don't know if it's still been decided about that stupid U-turn that we're going to have to live with, and hopefully, nobody gets killed there if that happens. It looks like it is. And you won't, you won't hear this too much from me. Thanks for the Chick-fil-A vote, and thanks for the, the equipment vote with the cars and the dump truck, even though you got one stick in the mud out there, wanted to change everything. I don't know where his head's at. And the Birdtown, you just got to remember, you know, with birds, what the reward for feeding the birds are. They poop on your head. Memorial Day, Memorial Day coming up, want to honor all the servicemen that didn't make it back. They gave the extreme sacrifice, didn't make it back. Going to have the American Legion Parade. Everybody should come out and say it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeApril. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll go to old business. I just have a quick report, and Ms. Snyder or Chief Forsyth can tell me if I got something wrong. But at last meeting, I reported that, that we were ironing out some language with the borough on the fire services agreement. The negotiating teams met a week and a half ago, and we agreed on the language. We have, we have two, two minor changes in that document. One, one was adding an NFA board member to the fire service commission that was proposed, and the other was providing an expense report to the borough from the township. And that's, that's something that's in the borough code, that when they fund something, that they get the expense reports back. So I hope, I believe we'll have the final version for your authorization at the next meeting, and I will get that out in the email to, to you post haste. Got it?
I would agree with everything you just said.
Okay, very good. Any other old business? Any new business? I would just mention, because I, we kind of mentioned it with the wireless communication ordinance, that I suppose there'll be a discussion, maybe a lively discussion at the jointure on June 2nd. So that, the discussion will continue. Maybe we'll make some headway there too. And, all right, any other new business? Seeing none, I'd like to call for an adjournment. So moved, without objection. Good night.